All right. Okay, good evening, everyone. Time is 5:32. The April 11, 2024 meeting is now called to order. So the agenda for tonight's meeting will be a government-to-government meeting with the Suquamish Tribe. We will start with welcoming and opening remarks made by tribal chairman Leonard Forsman.
Hoxell Hill, thank you for coming over to Suquamish and to the Port Madison Reservation for this important meeting. And we have a few new faces in the room, so I thought we'd go ahead and start with introductions here at the table. So I'll pass the mic.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us. My name is Laura Lee Morsette, and I'm recently newly elected here Suquamish Tribal Council.
Hoxell Hill, Azure Boree. I am a newly-elected Tribal Council member, and I am the Traditional Food and Medicine Program Coordinator here for the tribe.
Good afternoon. Irene Harper, Suquamish Tribal Council Secretary and Port Madison Enterprise's Chief Operating Officer.
Hi, I'm Bree Martinez. I am School Board Director for Area Three. I'm the Vice President, and I'm also the Liaison for the Kingston area.
Hi, I'm Stacy Mills. I'm the North Kitsap School Board District Five Director and also the Tribal Liaison to both the Suquamish and Port Gamble Skalalem Tribe.
Good evening. Rick Eckert, School Board Director for Area One, and I'm the Legislative Representative for the Board this year.
I am Alexis Wint, and I am an Administrative Assistant for the Teaching Learning Department.
Okay, and Mike Desmond, Director of District Two, President and also WIA Representative. Thank you.
Rachel Davenport, Interim Superintendent and Secretary to the Board.
Welcome, everybody. I'm Josh Bagley, Vice Chairman, Suquamish Tribe.
Hi, I'm Beverly Godfrey, District Four Representative and City Council Liaison.
Good evening. Brenda Guerrero, the Director of Education for the Suquamish Tribe.
Good evening. Luther J. Mills, Suquamish Tribal Council Member and Port Madison Enterprise Ambassador.
Okay, once again, thank you, everybody, for coming together and coming here to work on these important issues. And I've been around a little while, and you've heard, probably many of you have heard my reflections on the history of our relationship. But it's always good to revisit the fact that this reservation established by Treaty of 1855 with Chief Seattle. And we've, since the treaty was signed, we've been working on trying to maintain our culture in the face of great efforts by the federal government to assimilate us and to eliminate our standing as a tribe and threaten our sovereignty and also erase our culture and our language. So our people didn't intend that to happen when the treaty was signed. The treaty did put aside a promise of education. We expected that education to be here on our reservation, but that never really ever really truly happened. And eventually, we were all, our ancestors were forced to attend, were mandatorily forced to attend the Tulab Boarding School primarily. So that's always been something that our current generation has been trying to overcome through some of the things that were lost in that process. Since then, we've been able to attend the public schools and look upon the school district and the state and the federal government to provide that education that was promised in the treaty. And you folks here at the school district are part of that, we believe, part of that promise. And that was one of the main reasons we like to have this annual meeting is to make sure we check in with each other on how things are going. I think that we've, you know, had our ups and downs. We've made progress, and then we've had setbacks. But I know the people in this room I've gotten to know pretty well, and I don't think we'll ever give up on trying to make a positive impact on all of our students and bring more, you know, tribal curriculum into the schools, try to be more of our culture and language and our value systems into the schools, and educate each other and do that in the best, what's in the best interest.
All right, thank you. So I just want to open with a couple, a couple of brief remarks. First, most importantly, thank you for hosting us here today. You know, it's an honor and a privilege to be here at your facilities today. So we look forward that we can do, continue doing this, and I like the idea of coming to your facilities for this meeting. So I, this is my first time connecting this government-to-government meeting as the Board President. So when I was preparing for it, I was trying to take a couple of minutes to think, you know, how I wanted to try to guide this meeting. And the first thing I thought about is, you know, purpose. You know, what do we want to try to accomplish at this meeting for that? And I think, you know, for me, and I speak for the rest of the board, but they can add their comments, is just continue to grow the relationship between the two groups and foster a partnership with that. So I think the biggest thing is, what I want to try to do this evening is just be open and honest. You know, just not, you know, be afraid to bring up specifics. I mean, you know, sometimes I feel like we kind of, we come together and we try to address issues. But, you know, the best way to do that is just going to be getting down to specifics. And sometimes it might be uncomfortable talking about those, but I think we all have the same goal in mind to do that. So anytime that, you know, when we're going through the recommendation, if we can, you know, bring up examples that will help us, you know, just kind of get into the weeds to try to do that. So I think the important thing is we're all committed, you know, working towards the same goal. And that's, you know, to improve their relationship and improve the quality of education and the quality of life within the schools for the Suquamish tribal students and all students in general with that. So just looking forward to a good conversation. And again, thank you.
Brenda, is Brenda here? You introduce yourself already?
Yes.
Okay, good. Jay was kind of hiding you there for a second. Thanks, Brenda, for making, getting here from your, from your conference. So she was able to get here, and that's important for our superintendent to be here as well. And welcome, this is our acting superintendent. And just that, as far as maybe, I've never been in here before, you guys see all the paddles on the wall. These are representative of our canoe heritage. And as you know, many of you know, the Suquamish were a marine tribe. We didn't live on a river like other tribes did, so we moved out onto the waters of the Salish Sea and traveled far and wide in our canoes. And when we hosted the first, the last leg of the 1989 paddle of Seattle, we, surgeons that came around with canoe journey coming. Very active in that and with our two, two or three canoes that the tribe itself has and the number of family canoes. And every year, we get, usually get a gift of a paddle from a different tribe. And as we started to collect those, our past executive director suggested we have these in our council chambers. So many of these were gifted to us, to us by different, different tribes. Our late artists and a member of Lori's family here that part of our heritage. So that I'll go ahead and turn it over to Josh. Josh was going to go ahead and read some of the goals that we have and requests that we have and observations that we have with the district. And then I think we have a couple of members of the Inner Tribal Parent Committee. Does anybody here want to add on to that once he's done? Okay, you ready, Cory? Okay, and Cory will follow up with a statement after Josh reads those.
Okay. "North Kitsap School District. The Suquamish Tribe continues to work to improve and foster a better working relationship with the North Kitsap School District. Our priority remains our children. Therefore, we will continue to advocate for a safe and exclusive quality learning environment at NKSD. This can only be achieved with an open and honest dialogue between the Suquamish Tribe and NKSD. Following our recent meeting, we provide the following requests, questions, recommendations, and concerns. One, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting that the NKSD School Board members and administrative staff show respect for the Suquamish Tribe's culture and sovereignty through genuine efforts to learn and understand the structure of our Suquamish tribal government, culture, practices, and values, and our strong history of self-determination. Two, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting timely and ongoing communications between NKSD administrative staff, School Board, and the Suquamish Tribe's Education Department. Director pertaining to significant, pertaining to significant changes that affect current and future Suquamish tribal member and descendant families with students attending or scheduled to attend NKSD. The Suquamish, or three, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting that NKSD administrative staff work directly with the Suquamish Tribe's Education Department to include the success of tribal students in the NKSD district plan and clearly outline in district-wide policies and procedures. The Suquamish, or four, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting that NKSD School Board and administrative staff leverage the Suquamish Tribe's culture, expertise, and inherent knowledge to support district programs and/or services pertaining to tribal students. Five, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting regular and ongoing opportunities for both tribal leaders and community members to engage in opportunities to provide input, feedback, and implementation of services provided by NKSD. Six, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting that NKSD explore methods to efficiently share and use tribal student data to support student performance and outcomes. Number seven, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting that NKXDSD explore methods to develop and incorporate culturally appropriate and realistic performance measures for student data collection. Number eight, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting both Suquamish and Port Gamble Skalalem Tribe representatives' seats on the NKSD Ethics Committee when the committee is established. Number nine, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting Skyward and Google Classroom access for the Suquamish Tribe academic coaches who work directly with students and teachers to increase the student outcomes and success. Number 10, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting regular and ongoing reporting to both the Suquamish and Port Gamble Skalalem Tribes of the total dollar amount of impact aid received by NKSD and where the funds are being allocated. Number 11, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting that NKSD address parent and community concerns regarding the safety or lack of for K through 12 students due to bullying and other bias-based behaviors causing emotional and psychological harm and interfering with students' ability to learn. Number 12, the Suquamish Tribe is recommending that NKSD provide K through 12 students healthier meal options to include lower sugar and sodium op, sodium items. Number 13, the Suquamish Tribe is recommending that NKSD explore other methods for administering state, state testing that may result in more accurate individual student and district-wide data by considering age and developmentally appropriate testing preparation and administration. Number 14, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting that NKSD address the parent and community concerns regarding unconscious input and implicit bias towards tribal students resulting in alarming reports of disciplinary action. We have shared responsibility for students. The education of tribal youth is a shared responsibility among three sovereign units of government, tribal, federal, and state. The NKSD should always recognize that all parties are united in their concern and responsibility for students. We will, we look forward to receiving your response to the Suquamish Tribe's specific questions enumerated above. We also look forward to great cooperation and more open substantive dialogue that better meets the Suquamish needs."
Thank you. Here, right here.
My name is Cory Sylvie, Suquamish Tribal Member, NKSD Parent, and NKSD ITPEC Chairwoman. The reason for taking time on the floor this evening is to help elevate the voices of the parents who have Indigenous students attending North Kitsap School Districts and especially those parents attending monthly Inner Tribal Parent Education Committee meetings. Each month, parents of Indigenous students meet together and with Native Liaisons and education staff discuss upcoming events, current trends and concerns, recommendations for professional development, and other issues or important topics impacting our Indigenous students. Our meetings average between two to three and a half hours with anywhere from 20 to 40 participants each month. From these meetings, we've learned that parents of Indigenous students attending NKSD are seeking a higher level of support and action from both governing bodies to help ensure that our students are embraced while attending school, safe while attending school, and uplifted to achieve and succeed in academics and in life. Our Indigenous students are playing sports for the district, participating in clubs and band, bringing their culture into the classrooms, sharing our stories and teachings, inviting their favorite teachers and staff to our community events and celebrations. Our students are also experiencing discrimination, alienation, and consequences greater than the behavior. Not every Indigenous student has these experiences, but some do, and some is too many. We take our responsibility of raising our children seriously. And although the language and messaging is conveyed differently most times, we too enforce structure, guidance, redirection, consequences, and most importantly, age and developmentally appropriate expectations. Hear us when we say that we are working hard to foster and protect the relationship we've built with our children where they are treated as equals, asked for their perception, perspective, and truth, where we strive to live in harmony with one another and keep our homes safe and free from judgment and shame. We recognize our children as an extension of ourselves, and in the same sense, your teachers and staff are an extension of you and your leadership as a school board. With that being said, please consider leaning into our recommendations. Please consider partnering with us towards making positive and necessary changes to increase and ensure student success. And more importantly, please lean into us as capable and dedicated parents of Indigenous students who care deeply for our children. This government-to-government meeting is a reminder that regardless of who sits in these elected seats for both the tribe and the district, the output of action and the level of engagement coming from these seats impacts our current and future NKSD Indigenous students and parents always. I look forward to progress, and I thank you for time and consideration.
I'm always guilty of that. So I thought that, you know, we will be responding to the letter. So I figured the best way to do that is if we could just go through each one of those, each one of the 12 items, sorry, 14 items, and just give a chance to ask any clarifying questions.
Sure, if you have any. I mean, if you can address 50, 50% of them, I think we'd be in good shape. 14 is a long list, but, but you feel free to hit for 1,000 if you want.
Sure, and, yeah, I kind of
And I know that some of them would take some research.
Exactly, and that's why, kind of, like I mentioned, open remarks is I just want to try to pull to see if there's any specifics, you know, that we need to. So take, for example, number one. So is it the Tribal Council's feeling that the School Board is not showing respect for the tribe's culture? Or just, you know, it's, or is it just important that we continue to point that out and make it a point of focus? Is there any specific things for that one?
Well, I think this is probably somewhat in reference to the graduation event, I would think, is one of those that was, that was front and center. So that's just an example of just trying to avoid, you know, making changes into the protocol of our relationship without consultation first. So that's
Perfect, I appreciate that, yeah, exactly, so.
And I mean, and well, you know, we can let you know when you do something unintentional, so.
Yeah, exactly.
As well, I would think. Capable of doing that, right, Brenda?
I am sure you will.
In a good way.
But it helps us, you know, it, just by making that up, one of the 14 items in your comments, it helps us to understand how important that, that event is so that when the planning comes up, we take that.
Anybody having to add to that?
Concern with, you know, where I think it had a former superintendent that was acting on behalf of the Board. And again, this is a government-to-government, but yet we felt that, you know, the superintendent was, you know, the one we were, we were dealing with.
Yeah, and, and I understand that. I mean, that still is going to be the case. I mean, the, you know, the superintendent is, you know, we will work with the superintendent. I mean, she has the most knowledge. You know, I'm, I try to keep as informed as possible, but, you know, I'm not a professional educator. So, you know, we're still going to lean on the superintendent to help with us, and that's why she was kind enough to bring her staff this evening, too.
Yeah, and I was just going to say, too, I think a lot of it was the past superintendent and not working with our superintendent closely enough as we wanted, or, you know. And like, because like Jay said, I think this meeting is for us to work together, for us to work with the School Board. And then the, our superintendent, or Brenda, and your superintendent should be the ones working together below us. You know what I mean?
Yeah, that, yep, that's fair.
We understand that, you know, I think we understand that you're volunteers, so for the most part. I don't think you're drawing a big salary from the school district. But so, and we're fortunate enough to have some paid positions, but understanding that you have to rely on a professional relationship, and we understand that. But we just want to make sure that Brenda's first stop, and then it works, it can work out from there when stuff is needed. If you need, you know, if you need to delegate, I really need you to talk to the chairman or one of the council members. If you could get ahold of them for me, you know, there's some logistical things that sometimes they reach out to us for.
Okay, I understand.
But when we can work with your liaison, too, as well.
Yes.
I appreciate Brenda. We've met a couple of times already, and just being able to reach out and Brenda's availability. Both Brenda here and Tony as well, I see she's in attendance, too. It's, it's been really responsive anytime we need anything or have questions, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, I agree. I think that, yeah, that's why I said the past superintendent, because you guys have been working together a lot better already. So that's awesome, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on number one?
I would just say, there are times, so when the tribe has events that you would like us at, let us know. Because sometimes there's events that it's, you know, not being part of the tribe, it's not sure if they're meant for out, those not part of the tribe. They're meant for the public, and we don't want to presume and come, you know, show up. So if you, if there's an event that you're holding and you would like us to be part of it, please invite, let us know. And I, I know, we'll try to be there when we can, but, you know, we never want to presume. So it's always helpful to, to let us know what things you would like to see us at.
Do that. We'll make sure that, I think you're 55 now by now, Rick. Dang it, I'm waiting for you to get to the front, I was trying to get to the front of the line for the food.
I am 53 tomorrow.
Oh, okay, well, you'll have to wait, you'll have to wait a little longer. Don't be in too, don't be in too much of a rush. Okay. Sorry about that, I didn't want to assume anything.
Yeah, Brenda.
Go, Brenda.
I just wanted to see if I can request if we work our way up from the bottom to the top, because the ones from the top were recommendations really from last year.
Okay.
So if we could address the, at least the bottom four right now, that would be great, thank you.
Yeah, what I had written out for 14 is, are, do you feel that tribal members are aware of the reporting process for any specific issues that occur? Or is that something that we can help educate on that?
No, they're, they are aware of the reporting process. It's just the way that things are being handled at the school district. I think mainly our concern right now is with the Kingston Middle School. With some of our, our children that are attending, the way that they're being treated by staff is really concerning. And it was brought up at our last ITPEC meeting, so it was.
I'm not aware of any current reports and investigations that we've received, are there?
I have not.
Okay.
I know that Oh, sorry, when we meet, and I think the avenue that we discussed, and if there's a different avenue to have those come to us, but the avenue that Brenda and Tony and Gwen and I discussed was that if there is those type of complaints and complaints made that are coming from the ITPEC meeting, that they go to our ITED meeting so that we get those. If they're immediate complaints, then they go specifically to the principal and assistant principal.
It's just that if a formal report's not made, it never really rises to our level, so we're not really way that we can educate them, or if they feel like there's any barriers to them reporting, like they don't feel comfortable or anything, those are the things I'm interested in, and I'd like to try to eliminate so that we can get them through the process and they have an avenue to appeal that, you know, any decisions are made. So it's just more formal in nature, that's all I would hope for.
And I will say that I believe one of the last year's recommendations talked a little bit about culturally responsive and the differences in cultures and students and how we treat each other in school. And I will say that we brought in August and then again in February Ben Abali, who talks about culturally responsive classrooms, how to intervene immediately. If you're a staff member, not just a teacher, we have parent educators or food service workers that witness things that go on, a safe way to intervene immediately instead of allowing it to continue. And then that student is dealing with it when they go to their next class, which may impact their behavior in that next class. And so we've brought that trainer in, and I know it's something that we are going to continue to work on. And at our last ITED meeting, Brenda and Tony brought another professional development around, and I'm going to get the name of it wrong, so Brenda, I'm going to look at you. It was the blanket training where we lay out the 50 blankets, and it was around, sorry, I'm going to get the name of it wrong.
It's Kairos, Kairos Blanket.
And they were both very, listening to them explain it, it was very impactful to them. And we talked about having, weaving that into our beginning-of-the-year training and professional development for our staff as well. Sorry, from a not
Would you say NKEA is aware of the issue?
Yes, yes.
Got it.
Yeah, Ben Abali's a WEA trainer for the State Education Association, so trains with all of the teachers in the state.
So I don't, I don't want to leave this one just hanging. I would say that we acknowledge the issue and are aware of it, and will continue working on that we just partner together to help people actually file formal complaints or.
And I do have monthly meetings with And I do have monthly meetings with, um, Sequamish Elementary, Kingston Middle, but we haven't been able to meet for a couple of months because of our, a conflict in our schedule. So I haven't been able to talk to Adam about that, the issue that's coming up, but we do have a meeting on Tuesday, yeah. So I will talk to him as well, so, um, about some concerns that we do have. And then with, um, Kingston High School too, I meet with Miranda out there too, so.
Kingston Middle School.
All right, he's our new pre, he's our new Kingston Middle School principal back here, so.
Okay, um, thirteen, I'm gonna have to lean on you, because a, a lot of this is around testing, so the first question is, um, you know, what are we mandated to do for testing? How much wheelroom do we have there, um, you know, that we can?
Yeah, when, um, uh, the, they were sent ahead of time, so Josh, thank you for reading them, uh, one of my big questions was, what's the, what, what are we, what do we want to solve with this? What do we want to, how do we wanna tackle this, because there are some requirements, but if there's something that, um, is going on there, that's inappropriate, or if somebody needs a small testing environment, we have a lot of different tools for state testing, or is this individual curriculum testing? So that one I had a lot of questions on.
I'm gonna invite Cory up, because this was brought up at the ITPEC meeting, so, and I'm not sure if it was at the last one or the one that, the prior that I wasn't at, so.
Thank you Brenda, um, so amongst parents, the conversation, we, so we ask for data often at our ITPEC meetings. And we don't only wanna see our indigenous students' data, but we also wanna see it compared to the district. And we're not necessarily asking for you to throw out state testing, and we're not saying that there doesn't need to be, um, an evaluation and, and measurements and data to compare to. What we are saying is that some of our practices and systems in the school district are, are old. They're testing methods that we experienced as students going through North Kispom School Districts. And we're confident that there are other ways to test our students that truly reflect their academic success. There are small steps, like making sure that all of our students who have IEPs are offered those testing, um, accommodations. But more than that, we know that our students don't test well under pressure. We know that testing for, um, four to six hours a day isn't best practice for our kids. And so, we're hoping that through this recommendation, the board and the superintendent can use it to say, see, this might not be working. And here's this group of parents and students, um, as evidence. And, um, when, we too wanna see the data, and we wanna celebrate when the data looks better than it did the last year. But we also know our children, and we know that when they're coming home from those testings, they feel that they didn't do well. Leading up to testing, they are feeling, um, anxious because of the messaging around it, that it reflects the teachers' practices, that the school wants to look as though, um, they are being successful, and that pressure being messaged to the students is impacting the data that you're receiving. And so we're just asking that you explore some other options that, um, even some of the earlier steps could be talking to teachers about how to prepare their students for testing. That you're doing as well as you can, what do you need to feel prepared tomorrow morning? I'm so happy that you're here, and we're gonna get this done, and let me know if you have any questions, that those smaller steps can even show us changes in our data moving forward. And so we're not asking for you to throw it out, we're just asking for you to explore some other ways to conduct those testings, so that when we see that data, it truly reflects the students that you have attending the school, especially ours.
Thanks Cory, would it be beneficial to, um, maybe at the next ITPEC meeting, share some of the universal tools? I know state testing is just one test, so I will just tell you from a kiddo that's coming up, I have a daughter who's gonna have to do the state testing again, and she went all the way back to last year and said, Mom, it took me three days to do the writing, where it took some people in my class just an hour. And this is a year later, and it's still impacting her, so I, I understand how any way we set up our kids for success for that type of testing, and telling them, doesn't matter how long it takes, how important prepping them is. Would it be beneficial to help, like, show the parents, maybe have Brenda at, at ITPEC, and I'll show our parents, like, the universal embedded tools that are available for every kid, regardless of IEP or 504? I'm not sure if everybody knows those are available for every student, there's both embedded and non-embedded tools. And then there's designated supports that are also available for every kid, embedded and non-embedded, and a lot of people don't use those. And then accommodations, of course, for 504 and IEP, but it may be beneficial to even, to show you, I don't know, that, like, your awareness of all of the different tools that are in there, but show our parents that too.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so when I read this, I thought more of the test itself, but it, what I'm, think I'm hearing you say is more, it's more the, the social, emotional, and, and the support of the student around the testing, i- i- am, am I hearing that right? Okay.
If we can get some from where we got it out, that would be great.
Most of us agree with that.
So we understand how important the results are, um, but we wanna make sure that our students come home feeling like they did their best, and they come home feeling like their teachers in however many classes they're in, um, gave them the accommodations or the support they needed to, to do the best that they can. And then when we as parents see that data, we don't have questions around the, how it was conducted, but we have questions about what that data's telling us. And we too can provide recommendations to, um, tribal council, the school board, Brenda, Tony, and anybody else who wants to hear us.
Well, I, I think we have a lot more control about how we give it than what we give, so that, I think that's good, because these are the kind of things that, yeah, we can, we can probably make more grounds on than the test itself, because that's, a lot of that's directed, but like you said, making the kids feel more comfortable, making sure that the kids and the parents and the teachers all know the options. Um, you know, I, I had a kid that needed to pull out testing in another room, you know, more time, you know, if we just stuck him in there and gave him the test, yeah, he wasn't gonna do so well. So I fully understand that, so, thank you.
By the time our students are in middle school and high school, if they know too what kind of accommodations to ask for, um, you're giving them some life skills to be successful beyond school, which I'm sure every teacher would like to, to feel that they accomplish by the time those students graduate, so, yes, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Beth, real quick.
Well, I'm a former teacher, so I've given that test many times, and it is frustrating for the teachers and the kids, because we're trying not to make it stressful for them. But on the other hand, we know we want them to show what they can do and do their best. One of the, um, accommodations that I hope all the teachers are using is there's practice questions. And in our classroom, we would give the practice test question, just one question, you know, earlier in the year, and then we would talk about the results. And, um, I would have the kids tell me, well, why did you choose that one? And a lot of times, it was, um, the, they misunderstood what the question was asking. And once the kids could tell, oh, well, I chose it because it said this, and, and someone else said, well, but that's not what they meant by that part. And it really was helpful for the kids to have that dialogue between themselves, and helped me understand why that question was confusing to them. And it made a big difference in kids who are at twos instead of threes, because it was just a few questions, and they would have been at standard.
But that's one of the things about culturally biased testing we run into, is, is that one of the things that, um, when we did the study back in the day, that kinda came out since Time of Memorial, um, curriculum, was that there were three things that we found would help student success minimally. Uh, the minimum three things was more native teachers, more tribal curriculum in the schools, and, uh, less, um, no more culturally biased testing. So, one of the things we thought about was like this team approach, whereas maybe, instead of the individuals sitting by themselves, you know, because as a, it's a community or a tribe or whatever, you work together, you know, people have different skill sets, and, um, we work as a team, so sometimes I think that's right, where maybe they're having that group discussion about the test. Makes a big difference, so I'm glad to hear about that.
Would you like to add on to that request? Last year I requested, when we get our data from the district, it only shows our Sequamish kids. If we can get, um, again, I'll, I'll request it, to get the whole school's data along with ours, so we can compare how our kids are doing compared to everybody else as well.
Yeah, and just, just a reminder, um, the individual, uh, school connections meetings that we do, um, with each school, the presentations for those, I mean, for the most part, we're usually breaking out as cohorts, um, and so, just by going through and looking at those presentations, you can probably get a good idea, but I think we can definitely do that. Okay, um, so yeah, I think that, I appreciate the feedback, I think that the two big things, um, data sharing, I think we can definitely address that. And then the, the messaging for the testing, I think that's important, and that's important for all students too. Um, you know, the actual, um, mandate of state testing, that, um, is probably not something we can tackle right now, so, um, we're just, we're limited by that. Okay, um, so twelve, um, I thought was a, a great recommendation, um, dealing with, uh, school lunches. I think the biggest thing there to, to point out is just making sure that parents are educated on that, that, you know, when you're talking about school lunches, there's kinda two different things. I mean, there's, when you're looking at the prepared, basically think tray lunch that you're serving the students, that, that's one thing. But then there's also additional items that they can go purchase, and maybe that's where these are coming from. Cause when you look at the actual tray plated lunches, those are usually set menus that have to go through USDA, uh, guidelines and everything, so, is that fair to say?
It is, yeah, I, I made a couple of notes just from meeting with our food nutrition service. They, he talked about the options, and so, having a few kids myself, I know if they're looking at a thing of Fruit Loops or, you know, some breakfast yogurt, he might choose those Fruit Loops, and even though I don't want him to, but, um, I, I do wanna say that there are options there, and so some of it might go back to what Cory was even saying before about educating, um, and talking to our kids about, hey, that's probably not a great option for you, even though yogurts have a lot of sugar too, you may wanna choose some of the fresh fruit or dried fruits, um, even some of the juices are high in sugar, so you may wanna milk or something, so. It does go back to educating the kids there.
Yeah, so, but I think if, so if there's specific items probably on the, the, what I'm gonna say, offering side, you know.
Yes.
Energy drinks or, or something like that, you know, that, that's something that I would, I would definitely wanna know about, you know, that I think that we, we might eliminate. So I think there are just, if, uh, any additional specifics would.
We're doing a couple of, um, experimental offerings this year, one of them are salad wraps, and the other one is actual salads, and so. I have some principles here, so I don't know how well those, they see the lunches every day, I don't know how well those are received. I have heard that the salad wraps at the secondary schools have been going very quickly. For extra purchase, no.
I just, I, I think that's what they're, I think a, a lot of the issues were, I think a lot of the issues we're talking about elementary school, where kids can't get those secondary options.
Is there any, um, traditional foods putting on, putting through these menus at all? Salmon, lean meats, things like that, more, I mean, seafood?
Yeah, um, not that I'm aware of, but that's, I mean, it's, it's not opposition, yeah.
USDA, and even our USDA, our commodity programs, you get salmon, rice and things like that, beans, wild rice, so.
Yeah.
I'm always advocating for.
Yeah, absolutely.
Our, and I, I do it all the time with our kids, our students here, is just getting them to try those things. And so, I'm always gonna advocate for that.
Yeah, no, thank you.
I'm the vice chair.
Go ahead briefly, please.
Just very briefly, OSPI, the nutrition program, and the USDA are reviewing, uh, incorporating traditional foods as reimbursable items. So, just wanted to share that.
So it's coming down the line.
Heard there's energy around that, and USDA has been being, um, powering itself, or being empowered, or being encouraged to incorporate.
Okay, um, so number eleven, I think, kind of ties a little bit into fourteen, so, um, the same thing there, it's just, this, the same question is, again, formalized reporting, getting it through the investigative process, so it can be, it can be addressed there, um, unless there's any specific, um, issues.
Just a comment really, and I really appreciate, I just wanted to note, um, I've been able to, um, take part in the, um, ITPEC meetings, and just, um, kinda hear, um, the feedback, and it's been really good and helpful to hear, um, from the parents. And I just, um, appreciate that, and appreciate that you guys have, um, been inviting me to, or been okay with me joining, um. And I think that when I look at numbers eleven and fourteen, um, what it makes me think of, and I think what was talked about a little bit, is our kids feeling a sense of connectedness, and being, feeling connected, um, and having those safe adults at school, having people that they trust. And I think that's big, I think that's big when we talk about, um, the bullying and the harassment, no matter whether it's student to student, or even staff-student, um, relationships as well. I think being connected and feeling connected and having our kids feel connected, it's a lot more of the social, emotional, um, learning work that we have to do, that we keep working on. I know, um, we've seen some really great presentations of the work that's being done, and I would just encourage, um, that our staff at the district really continue that, because it, it's so much, um, so needed. Uh, I think what I was hearing from parents, um, is just that the kids aren't, you're feeling disconnected, right? And you don't feel like you can report it, because if you're feeling so disconnected, there's not a good safety net for that. So, I just wanted to kinda, I guess, um, notate that, um, that I, that's what I was hearing from some of those parents, was that concern too? Was the kids, um, in the buildings maybe not feeling connected enough to be able to find those trusted people to do that? And that's really important, and I think that's gonna go a long way in really helping with, um, you know, those sorts of, um, horrible issues that shouldn't be happening to our kids at school, um, you shouldn't, school should be a safe place, and they shouldn't be feeling that way. So I think the more we can work towards a social, emotional learning, the more that's gonna help with that. Thank you for letting me, um, be a part of those meetings, and it's, um, always good to hear from, from the parents.
Are the kids from Gordon and Wolfley, who go to Kingston High School along with the Sequamish kids, are those kids ever, um, connected or done anything together before they get to middle school? Like, you know, maybe, I don't know, field day or a school lunch? I mean, maybe those kids that all three school districts, um, buildings, there could be some way for them to connect with each other before they get to middle school. And maybe that would help them all get to know and understand each other better.
Thank you for the comments. So, number ten, Impact Aid, you know, we've had discussions on that, I think that the biggest thing there was, um, on that. I think that the biggest thing there was we, I think we had efforts in the past to try to separate Impact Aid. So better tracking for tribes versus military and such. So I, I think we still need to continue on that, correct?
Yes. And Mike, Mike is behind me, so he can correct me if I'm wrong. But the, it looks like to the request, sorry, different Mike, our other Mike, he's our finance director. If it's the communication of the dollar amounts received and where it goes, that's a breakdown that Mike's department can do. We would just need to know, do you want that twice a year, quarterly, what that looks like once a year at this meeting? Or where, when and where would you want that information shared, I guess would be?
And do you, Brenna? Okay. Okay. For nine, Skyward, Google Classroom, you know, the discussions in the past have centered around cybersecurity. We're still limited on being able to.
That's accurate. But the Skyward piece, we do share, and then I will look down the table. Some are, there's other parts of our team that can help answer. So I'm not doing all the talking. But Skyward, we can share. We do share with our academic coaches, anybody that has a release of information form, we share that information with them and they can get on and look at the student, that individual student's information. With the Google Classroom, it's more difficult because it opens the entire classroom up to that person. So then they're able to see sensitive information that's protected under, like in a hospital, patients' rights are HIPAA in school, their rights are protected under FERPA. And so it protects them under the FERPA to where we can't give them access to the Google Classroom. One of the members on our team, when we receive the recommendations, suggested that we look into. So this is not a guarantee, but look into, we're using Panorama as a data collection. And so one of the things we're going to look to see if it's possible, I'm not sure if it is, but we're going to check to see if there's a way to set up students that have the release of information forms in Panorama so that information collect become kind of a hub where like discipline, their student surveys that they fill out, all of that's one place that all that's kept. And so I know our team is checking to see if that's.
And also, sorry, just a reminder, there is the guardian feature within Google Classroom. You know, I'm listed as a guardian. So I get a weekly email that comes out for each, each one of my children as a summary of all the assignments that they were assigned for that week. Continue to encourage people to sign up for that feature.
There's a big update. It's scheduled right now for they're releasing more parent abilities.
And that was going to be my question. I wanted to find out if there was some sort of agreement that we can put together, a memorandum of understanding. And, and then also, is there a way that we could set up our coaches to be volunteers and extension of NKSD? So just putting that out there. I think that would be beneficial. And I think the liaisons having access is really important, but we would need to figure out how to coordinate to make sure that their, the children are getting the services and support that they need.
But they do have the volunteer paperwork filled out.
So are the tribal education staff able to sign up as guardians in the Google account then for those students if they have releases then? Is that an avenue that concurrently happen?
It's not an avenue because of the way the integration works. It's all
Oh, okay. Thank you for explaining that. I wasn't sure how they were linked. So I know, yeah, in other cases, like different data share agreements and different like merit staff employment agreements and MOUs come into play. So I wasn't sure how that linked in the software.
Much resource and as much information as possible.
So number eight is around committees. I will just say absolutely. You know, we welcome, I'd like to get as, as many tribal members on our committees as possible, not just with this one committee, but we are in the process of advertising for facilities committee. I think it's really important that, that we get members from both tribes on our facilities committee to help us kind of push the path forward. And also, you know, when we're looking at facilities like Suamish and Wolfley and Kingston Middle School and High School. Talk one time about how we can incorporate artwork into those facilities, too, that we like to do that. But we just need participation in those committees. So we, just if there's any barrier, any way that if you feel like you don't know what committees are out there or how people to get involved, please let us know and we'll forward that information over.
One of those other committees is the instructional materials committee. So the one that does curriculum. So absolutely, that would be one where encourages, you know, encourage parents, community members, members of the council, you know, to get on that committee. Because every time we look at a new curriculum, that's the committee that's, that's vetting it, that's looking, going out, you know, searching, searching all the various vendors. And so, and Bren makes the recommendation then to the superintendent board of if it's a good, if it's a good committee, you know, if it's a good curriculum, if it meets what we need, there is something on the checklist that, that talks about if it does meet the since time of memorial requirements. But, you know, do they necessarily know who's on that committee? So the more involvement from yourselves and from Port Gamble on that committee, that would be great because then we know that that check really is a true test and not just, well, we think so.
So I know this was one of our past concerns. So I would like to ask, are you making an ethics committee? And where are you in the process of making an ethics committee, if you are?
Sure. We, at this point, I know that we are, the facilities committee is ongoing, met, we're asking for members for that. The finance committee, I don't think has had their first meeting yet. I think they should be, okay, yeah, that one should be coming up. We'll probably go through the same process about raising those. You know, really, I think to get the ethics committee up, you know, there just needs to be a clear mission statement for that group. So I think that's what we're kind of doing is, you know, we don't want to stand, stand up a group without having a charter kind of first in place and kind of having a road for them to go down and do that. The other thing to keep in mind is we're probably pretty close to starting up on just the mission and vision. I think that that would probably fall, fall into that, too, and do that. So I think just more to follow on those.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, I think six and seven are both around data. I kind of just had a question on that. We received training from the state recent, I can't remember the exact name of the training, but liaison with, with tribals, tribes. And a lot of the training that we received from the state was that the challenge with data is how it's being coded. Are you guys aware of that? And is that kind of ongoing? Is that basically it's the way the forms are being filled out, they're, you're not actually being counted?
Oh, yes. And they fill out more than one, not just Native American. Yes. We're trying to figure out a way for, to help our families fill those out. And we talked about doing it our, our back to help them. And
Okay.
So we can help do those forms as well.
Yeah, because I, I think that's before we can actually kind of look at and evaluate the data. We need to make sure that it's, it's accurate. So probably the first starting place with that.
I Ted, is that still the best way for data if we want to get data to you to share it with?
Okay. Yeah, yes.
Those are the rules. So we learned that once a parent fills out a form, starting as early as kindergarten, they don't have to fill out the form again. What we're also wondering, we, as in Tony and I, we're just wondering if there's a way to do an audit to make sure that the tribal families who are attending NKSD, even if they filled out their form incorrectly five years ago, they could fill out a new form to make sure that their child is counted in that data and in that count.
I think it's worth, it's worth looking into. I can certainly look into seeing if there's a data poll we can do from Skyward. And then I think that I would probably work with Tony and Brenna to figure out the tricky way to, instead of just asking people, are you sure you're two or more? Instead of putting that out in a questionnaire because they have filled that out and checked that on there. So I, I think just trying to fill out and figure out an appropriate way to ask some of those questions around, would you like to change your form and, and make that not seem abrasive to some families? So, but I will look into that with our Skyward person.
And I think in the, what we talked about at ITPEC with around kindergarten registration, the messaging that we were encouraging was, how do you want your child to be identified in terms of data? And do you want your child to be counted as, as tribal indigenous, Native American, Alaska native? And what checking this other box or two or more or one or more results in, and just offering them that information? And when I say audit out loud, I'm thinking maybe people just have the option to resubmit the form and it can be updated into Skyward. And then we might see a change in numbers if we put that information out. But I'd be happy to help.
Thank you. Yeah. And kindergarten registration, I think, sorry, I'm looking at our principal over here. I think we already have 25. And this time last year, I think we only had three registered. I think it's up to 25. So great job, everybody involved with that. So.
Okay. Number five is, is really, I think, around feedback. So I would really just kind of look for additional information on this. I, I feel like we're pulling for feedback, but just because I feel like doesn't mean that that's true. So like I, I look at, you know, what can we do better on this to go do that? You know, we really lean on Panorama, accessibility of the board, the staff. So is there, is there any specific barriers that we're running into for providing feedback? It's happening at the teacher level, the building level, you know, versus more at the staff board level.
That one has improved with me, meeting with the principals.
Okay. Yeah. So I would just, just know that as a board, we're very interested in, in that, you know, we're interested in all 14 of these, but that one definitely piqued my interest. So feel like you or any of the tribal council or, or most importantly, parents are running into barriers to providing feedback or feel like they're not listening to, brought up to the board.
We did just get some, our survey for our Native American education program just came back. And so it's, it's hot off the press. And I know it's going to be shared at both ITED and ITPEC this next time around. I think we had 90 responses.
And then really one through four, I kind of grouped those. I, I kind of see those as ones, those are things that we can always improve on. You know, they specifically talk, talk about the board and administrative staff. I think that we can always learn more about the culture, specific experiences. Most importantly, you know, experiences within the schools, anything you can provide us that, we're open, we're ready to hear about that. Probably liaison and just events like this, getting together. And then we also appreciate the, the training that you, you have a couple of new faces. So we're interested, any additional training that you can.
I'll just add on that, that it's been great meetings with Rachel coming on board. She has been really open and honest with us and that hadn't happened in the past. So I really do appreciate it.
Good.
And her, so.
Sure.
Rachel, maybe you can address this because you've been in, at the district office. I heard from some teachers that they were being discouraged from using tribal members to come in as guest speakers since COVID. And I don't know if something has changed or they were told that the district, someone at the district would let them know when they have permission to do that. And it never happened. So, I mean, when I was teaching the second grade before COVID, we went out and visited both tribal
Right.
Us, you know.
Yeah.
And that wasn't a problem. But I don't know, something maybe has changed.
And so not that I'm aware of, if something, if somebody was given that direction, I think I would just say, hear me now. Please, welcome, welcome in our classrooms, welcome in our, I, I mean, I would love to, to see you all tomorrow at the culture fair at Kingston High School. I, I, I would love to take part. So just as I'm inviting you, please invite me. I've got two kids that should experience your culture as well. And I would say our staff. So I'm not sure where that came from, but I will just say that's not a belief, certainly not a belief that I have or the people that, that work closest with me have. And I don't believe any of our leadership team at this point would have that. And if they are, then I can have a conversation with them.
I was just going to say, oh, we have a, any of our public events, you guys are all invited to, just invitation, like Chief Seattle Days, canoe journey, any of that kind of stuff. There's a powwow, our renewal powwow isn't two weekends, not this weekend, not the next weekend, the weekend after that, the weekend of the 26th. So you guys are invited to that, too. Come down, check out some dancers and some drummers and.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hey, can we have anything else? I think we're a little over, it's time expected, but not too much over. But it's like, thank you for the opportunity to exchange information and thank our parents for their testimony. And welcome to all of our new council members to this process. And look forward to more. and welcome to all of our new council members to this process, and look forward to more, you know, work together. We have a lot in common, and then we have much to learn from each other, so on behalf of Squamish Tribe, I'd just like to say, hima hisgoy for this opportunity to meet, and look forward to hearing back from you, from things we weren't able to cover tonight.
Absolutely.
When you do have that data, appreciate it. Does it?
No, again, thank you for having us, thank you for the opening an honest conversation, again, I think it's really important, you know, you will be getting a response from us, look forward of future meetings, and I think the most important thing is just, you know, we come here humbly, we're not perfect, we're not doing everything perfect, but we're, we're dedicated to improving, so just please work with us, and, and we're, we're ready to improve any way we can, thank you.
Any protocol to your journey, your meetings?
Yes, there is.
Yes. I thought there might be. Go ahead, anybody else have anything else to add, if anybody else in council?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I need the mic for one minute. So this is my last meeting on the school board. I made a commitment that if I was elected to the city council, that I would step down once the school board had a chance to settle, I feel we've reached that point with appointing Rachel, spring break's over, and also, some folks will remember, Leonard definitely, I started my journey on school board as a candidate, the very first thing I did officially was to come here to this room and introduce myself to you all, so I felt it appropriate, symbolic, right, that I ended here, so, so I actually, that orange folder, I transmitted my, I am officially resigning as of this evening, this is my, yes, this is my. So, so meeting with you all was my last act as a school board director, however, I will, I am still in the Paulsville City Council, and I did insist to be part of the city's committee that meets with the, with the tribal council, 'cause I wanna continue this relationship as long as possible, so, thank you all for welcoming me in the past to events, and.
Yes, yes, yes. Really appreciate that, Rick, and thank you for your bringing your heart to all your meetings, heart and your soul, all the meetings, and being vulnerable and transparent with us, and that's not only when we're in session, but also when we've, you know, needed information at the various functions that we see each other at, and just really appreciate your work, and we're working on a meeting with the city council where we're gonna host, so look forward to having you here soon. All right, anybody else from council, tribal council, or the school board, any last words? No more, no more last meaning speeches, please.
Yep, I'll just say, Rick, on behalf of the board, thank you very much for your years of service, look forward to continuing working with you, and keep in touch, and most importantly, thank your family for all the time that they've given up to allow you to come work with us, so it's just, it's been an honor, especially for me, you know, formership made, and learning from you throughout the process, you've been a great example to all the new school board members that have come on, so, thank you, all right.
Oh, I was just gonna second that real quick, 'cause I know, just publicly, to thank you, Rick, for your service, you are truly one of a kind, and your dedication to this district, to the school board, to the kids, to this, just, all of us, has been tremendous, so I just wanna thank you publicly for that, and I know my time on the board has been better because of you, so, thank you very much.
Yeah, I just wanna say, thank you, Rick, for all of your dedication to the school board, and look forward to working with the Paulsville City Council, and Stacey, I have a daughter-in-law, Stacey Mills. It's a pleasure to meet.
I feel like I know you.
Okay.
All right, well, the time is 6:45, this meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.